I call the January 4, 2022 meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers, here.
Me.
Here.
Truka.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Foote.
Here.
Allseth.
And I have a motion to excuse Ms. Allseth.
So moved.
Second.
In my hopes she gets feeling better.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the December 21, 2021, regular council meeting minutes that you've been provided. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. December 21, 2021, special council meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. December 30, 2021, public hearing. Minutes are before you as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The December 21, I'm sorry, December 7, 2021, regular council meeting that had previously been approved has been amended. If you look at your papers, the amendment says minutes approved December 21, page 2 through 4 header had an incorrect date, has been amended with the correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Granting permission for visitors to speak. If you would state your name and address, please.
Assistant Colonel Kurt Fanghouser, 616 South Prospect Street.
Is that the one?
Well, this one doesn't have.
Okay.
Is there going to be another speaking at the next?
Um. Do, 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 do.
I just, I just want to thank.
Yes.
James May for his two years of service, he, he is citizens of Bucyrus. I think a lot of times the job isn't, is a thankless job and thanks for your service, Jim. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Vicki Deshaun, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. I have three matters to talk about. The first matter has to do with a designated outdoor refreshment area. I have a question.
Okay.
I think this question, it should be rightfully directed to the law director, the interim law director. Do I have your permission to ask my question?
Yes, ma'am.
Of the law director. The October 16, 2021 council meeting minutes state the following. Law Director Brian Gerner asked about the status of Dora. The administration will work with the law director's office to get up to speed on where this stands. And there hasn't been a report from the interim law director, so do I assume you haven't had an opportunity to meet with the administration?
Yeah, I have to put together an application and resubmit, basically starting the process over the prior, the way the statute reads, and I don't have that in front of me, but there was a specific time period in which for the council to approve it after it had been submitted by the mayor. That's my understanding of where we were at. So we have to have, resubmit an application.
Okay, because I did some checking, and what I found was that the public hearing was held on August 24, 2021. At that time, Economic Chair Foote presided over the hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, Myers moved and McKeever seconded to have the matter referred back to the Economic Committee, Economic Development Committee, excuse me. At that time, Foote stated that the Economic Development Committee would meet on September the 9, 2021, at 6 o'clock in council chambers. At the 9, at the September 9 meeting, there was no meeting held by the committee. On September 23, the committee held no meeting. On October the 7, a meeting was held, but there was no discussion on Dora. On October the 21, no meeting was held. On October the 4, no meeting was held. On November the 4, excuse me, no meeting was held. On November the 18, no meeting was held. And when I say no meeting was held, that was no meeting by the Economic Development Committee. On 12/9, we did have a meeting, but there was no discussion on Dora. And then on December 23, the committee meetings were canceled because of the holiday. So I guess I'm wondering what happened? It looks like all got dropped. Is that pretty much what you're saying? That there was a timeframe and it wasn't followed?
From the reading of the statute, as I recall off the top of my mind, there was a specific timeframe that the council had to accept or reject after the hearing. And yes, it wasn't then brought back to the council floor.
Okay.
That's just off the top of my mind, though.
Okay, thank you. The second issue I have has to do with the public hearing that was held on December the 30. This again, I believe, is a question that should be directed to the interim law director. Do I have your permission, Madam President, to ask my question?
And it was regards to what?
The December 30 public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
At that public hearing, there were only three council members present. I think we have a problem because we needed a quorum, and a quorum is four.
Is that a question?
Well, I guess it's a statement, and then I guess my question is, do we have a problem? Because there was no quorum.
I would have to check into that. I had COVID at that point, wasn't able to attend the hearing, didn't know that there was only three at the public hearing.
So I guess with the fact that you're going to check into that, it was stated at the December 30 public hearing that the Bucyrus City Council conducted, that the matter was going to be referred back to the plating committee, who will meet according to the vote, or according to the minutes, that we're going to meet on January the 6, 2022. So are you going to find out before Thursday if there's an issue? Because if there is an issue, I have to question if there could be any discussion at the plating committee meeting this Thursday on the public hearing issues that...
I will find out by Thursday.
I'll go over this, the ordinance that was discussed at the public hearing, dealing with Section 115.05 entitled discontinuance. There are some issues with that ordinance. Of course, I, you probably don't have that in front of you, but I'm going to go ahead and go over them. There is a duplication under 1151.05. We've duplicated the big letter A, the small letter A, and the small letter B. That's in there twice. So you need to take out one of those duplicated wording, which then means your reinstatement, which is number two, should now be number one. Under contents of application, we have a bullet rather than a small A. And then Section 3 will now need to be renumbered to read Section 2. And those are just things that I've noted, that I'm pointing out to you to take a look at, because if in fact you do meet on Thursday, or whenever you meet on this issue, that legislation, I believe, needs to be corrected because it's repetitive in an area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And let's see. That's it? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, after this council closes out, the new council comes in, you're going to have the public participation like at the beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Committee reports from 2020 to 2021 term. Mr. McKeever, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I don't have any committee reports for either plating or finance.
Ms. Sherrick?
I have nothing new for public lands, but...
Microphone. That's on.
Nothing new for public lands, but I am glad of the number of things we did get through this past year and got scratched off of the books.
Mr. Myers?
No written report, Madam President, but again, just want to point out, I think our biggest accomplishment was getting the EMS placed within our own fire department.
All right, thank you. Mr. Foote?
Nothing really to report. It's been a very slow year for economic development, and I think that's just because of the way that things have been in the world. We have had some help from the partnership, though. We were able to get a charging station put in at our picking parking lot, so positive move in that direction, but not much else, unfortunately.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Truka?
I'd just like to say a thank you to everyone. I'd like to say thanks to everyone on council that was behind water line expansion. That's really going to make a major improvement for the city of Bucyrus and all of Crawford County. And the last order of business, I wish Terry Spiegel good luck, and he's a very capable person. He's been around here for a long time.
But she's a block bill.
Wow, yeah, it's old hand to you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, traffic congestion?
Nothing to report, gentlemen.
All right. Motion to accept the committee reports as verbally spoken?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports, any special committees, 2020 to 2021 term? Mark, would you like to speak to the ad hoc and clerk?
I'm speaking for the clerk. We have one here that we're going to put in place at our next meeting, which is just a few minutes away. I'm glad she's here. Wish her the best of luck. I know she can do it. For the other, we're still in the process of taking care of business.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Do we have any unfinished business from the 2020-2021 term that anybody would like to discuss? All right, moving on. Bruce, could I have a motion to adjourn the signed I?
Sure, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at?
7:15.
7:15. All right, I'm calling the first council meeting of 2022 to order at 7:20 PM. Let's see. Stephen. Yeah, roll call.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers, here. Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
All right, thank you. Any public participation?
Ow.
He fixed the other one, Kirk.
Oh, it's working.
Yeah, it had come unplugged earlier. Now it's fine.
Kurt Fanghouser, 16, 616 South Prospect Street. First, I'd like to congratulate the incoming council members. It's not as easy of a job as you might think. You will find out very quickly that. What I'd like to address council about tonight is something that was on the agenda. I had the honor over the last two years to serve on the Crawford County Board of Health, and I was really, it's a five-year term, but I, I was fulfilling the last two years of Mr. Wireball's five-year term, because he quit when he left council two years ago. And that seat is, it's appointed, the person for that is appointed by the mayor, and it is approved by council. And I respect that decision. I see that the mayor has chose somebody else other than me to be appointed, and that's his right, and I respect that. But it comes down to you, seven members of council, that decide, and actually, it takes four members to confirm the seat. So basically, what I would like to tell you is my constituent, or I guess I'm represented by Ms. Sherrick from Ward 2 and the three at-large members, and I'm asking that those four people tonight do not confirm the mayor's appointment of Ciss Love to that position. And I'm not asking for me to be appointed. I realize there's probably a very slim chance that I would be nominated by Mr. Esir for that position, but what I would, the reason I would like you not to confirm that position, or the nominated person of Ciss Love, is because that, that would be moving Bucyrus backwards. And the reason, that I have very good reason to point out here, in 2014, a lawsuit was filed against Bucyrus City Council. That lawsuit was settled out of court in 2015, and it's my understanding that there was approximately about $70,000 of taxpayer funds essentially were lost due to this lawsuit. There was the settlement fee, I think it was in the $20-ish thousand, and about another $50,000 in attorney's fees, that the city had to hire attorney. And the person that was running that office at the time was a person that has been nominated by the mayor for this health board appointment. Please, for the sake of the taxpayers and taxpayer funds, do not, I ask this council, do not confirm that person so that the city may, or I guess it would be the health board, if that person was to violate any more sunshine laws, transparency government laws, that taxpayer funds would not be potentially at risk here. I understand there's, there's a couple people on council here that are probably already set in their mind they're, they're going to confirm that. I ask that at least some of you take a stand and vote no. Thank you.
Madam President, may I respond?
Sure.
Yeah, those are uncalled for, personal attacks on someone who has served the city of Bucyrus courageously and with, you know, the epitome of what it takes to sit in that council president chair. And she was, at that time, a long line of, of very good council presidents. She, in addition to that, she served, I think, at least one term already on the Crawford County Health Board with distinguished behavior, got along very well with everyone, and added a lot to the committee and to the health board, and also had, did not put her personal interests first, always put the health interests of the citizens of Bucyrus first. So you, we can't, and also, as I was speaking with the director of the health department and running by possible replacements, Ciss's name came up, and she said, "You couldn't do any better than Ciss Love." So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public participation? All right, moving on. The appointment of our new council clerk for the term 2022 through 2023, Megan Conley. Does that have a motion? And a second, please.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I need a nomination for naming the council president pro temp for the term of 2022 to through 2023.
I'd like to nominate Mark McKeever.
Any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Could I have a first and a second?
I made the first.
Right, I'm sorry.
Just need a second.
I just need a second, please.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of naming Mark McKeever president pro temp for the term 2022 through 2023?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Naming of council clerk pro temp for the term of 2022 through 2023?
I nominate Kevin Myers.
Any other nominations?
I make a motion to close the nominations.
Thank you. May I have a second to close the nominations?
Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I now have a first to name Kevin Myers, council clerk pro temp. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Any opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
I did that out of order, and I apologize. Motion carried. All right. You have before you the 2022 council meeting and committee meeting schedule. Anybody have any questions?
What's the August changes?
The August changes are?
August 1 is because of national aid out on the 2nd, and the 23rd and 25th are moving at a week past the Rovers Festival.
Did you get that? Anybody else see any necessary changes? All right. Could I have a motion and a second to accept these dates as our schedule?
So moved.
Who was that?
Dan.
Steve.
Was that Steve?
It was Steve. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, you have before you the appointments of subcommittees relating to council.
Actually, on the backside of that, you have the committee assignments first.
Oh, that was my bad. I skipped it, sorry. All right, on the back of your dates, you have committees.
I'll make a motion to accept.
The committee assignments?
Yes.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll go to the subcommittees. Sorry about that. We do them collectively.
I'll make a motion to accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Report of city officers. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to everyone, new council members, thanking the old ones and the others that have served for two years or more. And also welcome to Megan Conley, and she's taking the job. Just want to talk about a couple events. Last weekend, we were wrapping up the bicentennial.
Mary Lee.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry. I'll start all over. Thank you for the new council members for serving, and we thank the outgoing members too. In addition, we're thanking Megan Conley, welcome our new council clerk, and pledge our support to you. Two years ago, we started a bicentennial celebration. COVID kind of got in the way for a little while, but we decided about this time, a year ago, that the bicentennial was coming, COVID or not. So we went on, we had a fantastic committee, full of energy and great ideas, and we ended it last Friday, on New Year's Eve, with two events, a gala, which was a well-attended, fantastic event out at Pickwick Place, and then the brat drop, and I thank Doug and Kevin. Got to watch a lot of that, even though I was out at the Pickwick Place, it was really well done, had nothing but great comments, and we're looking for bigger and better things. So we thank everybody involved, especially for the Gala Kelly and Rhonda Roland. The entire commission was full of, like I said, full of energy, and, and all for the citizens of Bucyrus. When we started the bicentennial, we had two things in mind. in mind. We wanted to teach history of where the city, how it was founded, and also use it as a tool to unify. Today is a little more difficult that we have a lot of distractions, cell phones and TV stations, and more distractions for people. And we chose a theme of community unity, and by all measurements, it was very successful. It goes on, though. We think the seeds that were planted are going to pay off well into the future, and the legacy projects will continue. We had a big event here a few weeks ago when the Freddy's Building was torn down, and nothing but great comments about that. That's going to be turning into a park. And it's not a city park. It's actually owned by the Bicentennial Commission. Everything that takes place there is not funded by taxpayer dollars. And I know the Bicentennial Commission is applying for grants and has been raising money, and it'll encompass also the ice plant, too. That'll eventually come down, too. So, thanks to all who contributed to that bicentennial celebration, intended the events, and of course, worked so hard to make 2021 bicentennial celebration success. If you didn't know who the Norton family was, Sam and Mary Ann, I think you should now. And they had, it'll be a trivia question down the line, how many children did Sam and Mary have? Does anybody know the answer?
I'm going to go with three.
Three. They arrived in Bucyrus from Pennsylvania with four. No, they got busy after that. They had seven more. They had 11 children altogether.
I only knew because they named the downtown streets after their kids. There's three of them.
Yeah, that's good. That's a very good guess, though. Yeah. So, one way you can remember is the Norton Grove of trees on the way to Gay Street out to Allmiller Park. There's 11 trees, plus one for Sam and Mary Ann. So, if you ever forget that, go count the trees, right? So, anyway, thanks for everybody. I'm going to go in a little bit greater detail as I have the state of the city next month. So, again, thank you for all you folks that are serving, some of the people I don't know so well. I'm looking forward to getting to know you, some I know very well. And Dan, welcome back. Always remember that you serve the citizens of Bucyrus, and our efforts should be directed on making life better for our 12,000 citizens. And by doing so, we are good stewards of tax dollars and of the property, making sure our city looks good, it's clean and attractive. One thing I did mention at the bicentennial address at the gala was that all of us are not original Norton family members here. We do still have a few live in the country, but all of us have a story about when your family came here, right? And so, if we forget those stories and why we came here, we're not doing the next generation the favor of making this place attractive as it was for our parents, right? So, anyway, thank all of you again. Keep everything in mind, the citizens, when you make those decisions. I look forward to working with you, and thank you again for, all of you for serving.
Thank you, Mayor. Does Mr. Wagner have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
He's got a long list.
Okay.
And I'll go down, all 42 of them. Actually, there's 12. Compost site, last day will be this Friday, January 7th. Company comes in, grinds it up, and hauls it away. If you did not get your Christmas tree out this week, don't worry. Put it out next week, and we'll make sure we get it taken care of. Just for your information, the county commissioners have switched the waterline expansion projects priority. Locust Grove going into Sulphur Springs, and then through Sulphur Springs, is now second on the list after Stetzer Road. Okay, so, well, Stetzer Road 602 to County Road 330. And then, that's the top priority. Then, basically, what happened, Sulphur Springs now supplants the Osceola Waterline. So, the budget's going to have to be looked at and modified, just giving you a heads up. Good news, we had six people apply for a utility maintenance position. We have a test on Sunday. We have hired some new people. Dylan Scott, Josh Scheifly, and Matt Wagon. Blast starts next week. They're going to work in the service garage, and Wyatt Roth there will be working street and slash park department. We're going to have airport engineers, CMT is our engineers for the airport. Kevin DeTrey also, our airport manager, will be here at an upcoming meeting to talk about some of our future plans with the FAA. Laura McGinnis, who maybe many of you know. Laura McGinnis is our lead engineer on our EPA consent decree negotiations. She works for Arcatus, and she's going to be coming here to give you a wrap-up of the last five years and how the negotiations are going right now. All right? So, that's coming up soon. We are finishing up an update to our security cameras at Allmiller Park, and we will be putting a camera up at Shine's Art Park also. The recycle trailers are back here in the back. Those are, really, we have a lot of people dumping things. We ask people not to dump things when the recycling is full, or if there's no trailer. Those are, they're owned by the commissioners, and they determine when they're, you know, going to bring them in and out. So, and we just provide the space. So, just, what happens, obviously, you know, especially this time of year when you've got more wind, it blows all through the neighborhood, all through the city. The Stetzer Road project, which Bruce was talking about earlier, about expansion of water lines, it is a big deal. Unfortunately, we've got to have a delay in it because we're waiting for some pipe. And then, now we're waiting for flush hydrants, so we gave them an extension. And you all are keenly aware, I'm sure, of some of the supply crunch issues, and it's on a local level also. Jeff says, "I would like to welcome new council members and the current ones who have returned." And he's got his personal contact information right there, and you know how to get ahold of any of us. If you've got questions, anything comes up, or email, call us. Did you all get the three-ring binder?
They have not. They're in their mailboxes at the office.
Oh, okay.
So, they are going to be directed at the end of the meeting to retrieve them.
Thank you. I didn't see them, I guess. So, you're all going to, you have a three-ring binder of the 2022 budget. And I know I've talked to some of you about how the budget works here, just to kind of give you a little primer on it, and I'm happy to go over anything, how the money's spent. And Joyce, I'm sure can certainly give you plenty of information on that, too, can't you, Joyce?
I'm sure.
Yes. So, yeah, look that stuff over, and, you know, we have updates every month. And like I said earlier in my address, it's taxpayers' money. We just need to be very good stewards of it. Columbia Gas has started to replace a gas main line on Melody Lane from Lidwin to Fairview, and they should be done by the end of the week. That's it for Jeff's report. I'll entertain questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I do have a question. I was just asked what's going on with the children that the ambulance service used to work out. We had added up to talk about it, and then Jeff didn't participate, and I didn't know.
We're working on a plan. We're working on a plan for that, you know, possible tenant, and we're kind of going over that. We'll be kind of presenting that.
So, we got nothing?
Nothing yet. Nothing yet on it. Nothing to report, so. But we, you know, we know it's empty, and but we have, you know, we have a plan to get it leased and, in a good way, that'll serve the citizens of Bucyrus.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gernert?
Just to reiterate what the mayor and the state's service director said, welcome to the new council members. Obviously, welcome to our new clerk of council. Thanks for all the help and support of the previous council members, all of the outgoing council members, all of the administration staff. It's been a learning curve, but we're working. And I look forward to working with all of you here in the near future for the betterment of the Bucyrus community. I'll get you all my personal cell phone numbers. I hang out in the basement most days, all day. I'm in and out, but I look forward to working with all of you, and if anybody has any questions, I'd entertain it, but other than that...
Any questions for Mr. Gernert? All right. Ms. Shipper?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to welcome all the new members and returning members, and look forward to working with all of you. My door's always open, so if you have any questions or want to go over anything, you know, contact me. We'll set up time to get together and go over it. I do have some referrals already tonight. It's not what I usually do on the first meeting of the year, but we received several donations after the budget was passed, and so we need to incorporate those monies into the appropriate places. The Bucyrus Coannis Club has donated funds to us, which we received last week, for a sound system at Shine's Art Park stage. So, we're looking forward to that, and we need to appropriate that money into our art park fund. And also, we received several donations in the last week or so for the police canine unit. So, we'll have to appropriate that money there. We want to make sure it goes to the right place. And I'll have a breakdown of the numbers for Thursday's committee meetings, and I may have a couple other items for appropriations if I run across them when I'm going through these, but I think these two will probably cover what I have. So, that's all I have for the seating.
Thank you very much. Do we have a treasurer's report?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For appropriations.
Thank you.
Do you refer to finance?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a report from the treasurer? And police chief and fire chief, you have a report summary. Had a monthly report in your packets. Would anybody have any questions that possibly Mr. Myers could answer regarding the ambulance? All right, moving on. And I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time. Proposed Resolution 237-2021.
Proposed Resolution 237-2021. Be it resolved per Ohio Revised Code 721 et cetera that the council of the City of Bucyrus hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of Bucyrus to transfer certain real property owned by the City of Bucyrus and described as Address 822 Woodlawn Avenue, In Lot 1414, Permanent Parcel Number 0800-1712-4000, by Quick Claim D to the Community Improvement Corporation.
Do I have a first to accept this as a second reading?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Needs to be referred back to public lands and buildings. All right. Any public participation?
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. I have no public participation on the legislation, but I do have a question. I noticed on the agenda, there's no public participation for officers' reports and chairpersons' reports.
That'd be my fault.
Was that an oversight?
It was an oversight.
Now, I have no questions to ask of the city officers' reports or the committee reports, but I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was. It was an oversight, and we're not...
Yeah, it was an oversight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Yep.
I have public participation for the officer's reports.
Okay.
Kirk Van Gauser.
Six. Thank you.
I noticed after the mayor's report, he stated something about security cameras at the Shine's Art Park. I had previously donated security cameras at Shine's Art Park. There's currently two down there. Madam President, do I have permission to ask the mayor a question in regards to the security cameras he mentioned?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Is there something wrong with the security cameras that I donated?
Well, we want to make sure that the people on the other end of the cameras are either the police department or city officials, and not public, private citizens.
So, since I'm no longer on council...
Well, it is. We'll take them down. You can have them back.
I just think that'd be a waste of taxpayer money to spend on something that there's already donated there. How much are you spending?
The cameras, we have no access to whether he is even on cameras. Plus, I consider there are privacy issues, and a private citizen should be, you know, viewing.
It's a public space.
It's...
I've had a couple incidents where the police department have asked me for footage from those cameras, and they were able to make identify.
If you're willing, we can leave them up. If you would be willing to let the police department have the viewing and say, "Yes, we can," and not have any viewing of your own home.
That's perfectly fine. I'd like to meet with the police department and the administration and see how we can accomplish that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. Proposed Resolution 202-2022.
Proposed Resolution 202-2022, appointing Megan Conley to fill the position of Bucyrus council clerk on a full-time, 40-hour-per-week basis throughout 2022 and 2023 at an hourly figure of $18.50 for 2022 and $19 for 2023, together with the available health insurance and sick leave entitlements, et cetera, for all non-union, non-elected, full-time, 40-hours-per-week city employees. Further, the clerk's 40-hour-per-week shall include her attendance at all regularly-scheduled and specially-called council meetings and regularly-scheduled and specially-called committee meetings. Further, the clerk shall be paid compensation of one and one-half times the basic hourly rate for hours worked over 40 hours, when authorized by the council president, set appointment retroactive to January 1, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept this as the first reading?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, this is referred back to the ad hoc committee. Any public participation? All right. Committee report on pending legislation. Proposed Resolution 237-2021, the transfer of 822 Woodlawn to the CIC, public lands and buildings.
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 237-2021.
Proposed Resolution 202-2022, the council clerk appointment for 2022 to 2023 ad hoc?
Ad hoc committee is favorable to proposed Resolution 202-2022, the council clerk appointment.
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings, the proposed Resolution 202-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency? So moved.
Second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 202-2022? So moved.
Sorry.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 202-2022 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business we need to address? All right, as far as new and miscellaneous business, the mayor did touch on this. There is a binder for each of you in the council clerk's office in your mailbox of the budget, so please be sure to stop after the meeting and collect that. All right, we have no absences, so that can get moved on. Referrals?
We have one referral. It's the ODOC consent agreement to public lands and buildings.
Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. You didn't mention referrals for me?
Her referrals.
For appropriations.
And we also have the appropriations referred to finance that were previously...
Previously voted on.
Voted on.
That's probably why he didn't mention them, because they were previously voted on. Thank you all for your time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned at?
7:56.
7:56.